Good morning, it's now ten fifteen roughly and we wish to proceed with the day's activities. Consider this a call to the members of the council if you would join us a week in then I'll call the meeting to order conduct our business as is our routine and proceed with the balance of the activities for the day. Converteen, I would appreciate your being here. Sergeants, if you would make the appropriate calls, you would be appreciated.
Once again, good morning. We appreciate your presence today. As is our custom on Fridays, we will proceed with presentations. We, at this point, have five members present. How many members present do we have at this point? Seven members present. We need three for a quorum. We make no claim that we will make it in light of the fact that there have been some unexpected absences, but we do wish to recognize those of you who have come for the purposes of presentation. If there are others of you who wish to be heard, we will attempt to accommodate that. However, it will not necessarily be in the context of an official meeting and until that is declared by virtue of a forum being convened. So, Mr. Clerk, we're prepared to proceed in that fashion. Mr. Reyes, the opportunity is now for you to make your presentation, and we thank you for that, followed by Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you, Council President. As our honorees come forward, members of the council, I want to take the time today to introduce to you some very heroic people. When I finish telling you what they did, I think that you'll all agree that they do deserve the title of heroes. On September 3rd, at about 5:30 in the afternoon, a 91-year-old woman, who was on her patio, was approached by a man. This man pushed the woman back inside her residence and demanded her jewelry. He then proceeded to assault her. During the struggle, the woman was able to activate her emergency medical button that hung from her neck. When the fire department received the call, their dispatch attempted to telephonically contact the victim, but to no avail. Suddenly contacted one of her neighbors. As the neighbor approached and witnessed what was happening, the neighbor shouted for the suspect to stop. The suspect then began to flee the location as the paramedics arrived. You should know that as they arrived, they witnessed the suspect fleeing and began to give chase. And with the assistance of several neighbors, the suspect was eventually apprehended. Members, I know that giving chase to a suspect by people other than police personnel is not something that the LAPD generally encourages. But the fact of the matter is that we had a group of people who decided not to take the law into their own hands, put it to help a neighbor. So I wanted to recognize their effort and their courage. And with that, let me present these certificates of appreciation to... I want to make sure you get his last name right. Firefighter Paul Queyao. Firefighter Scott Tomlin. And Ms. Laura Inman, who is one of the neighbors who decided to get involved. Ms. Inman? Lastly, I also wanted to note that there were other neighbors who got involved, who could not be here today, but for whom we do have certificates. I want to say their names to show them that even though they are not here, we do recognize their effort. And they are Helen Molinar, Christopher Valverde, Corey Gomez, and Esperanza Valverde. Members of the council, it's important for us to recognize this notion of being neighbors, not only for the health of our neighborhoods, but to show support to our firefighters, to our police department, that if we, as a community, can become their eyes and ears, we as a city can become much more effective in providing our public safety in the sense of a healthy neighborhood. Now allow me to turn the microphone over to Commander Garrett Zimmin, commanding officer of detective services.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you very much for the recognition of these two fine public servants and the community member who helped us in this endeavor. On behalf of the chief of police, I also have some certificates of appreciation for both the firefighters and the community member. But prior to doing that, I'd like to just make a comment, if I may. We expect police officers to run to danger and firefighters to run to danger, and in this case, that's exactly what they did. They came upon a situation where a 90-year-old person had been assaulted. Thanks to their efforts of responding to the cries of the victim and to the community members jumping in to help, we were able to arrest this predator, and that's exactly what this individual was, is a predator, and get him filed on, and we'll probably be able to remove him from the streets. Keeping in mind the age of the victim and the type of crime involved, without that immediate assistance in arresting the suspect, it may have been a lot more difficult to prosecute this individual. So the heroic efforts of these two firefighters and the community member assisted us with that. So on behalf of the chief of police, I would like to give a certificate of appreciation from all the members of the Los Angeles Police Department, and particularly Moses Castillo, the detective from homicide that was assigned to this case, and to Scott Tomlin. And to Paul Queyao, right? We'll get it close enough. And particularly to our community member who isn't a public servant yet, as the councilman said, took the call to help a neighbor, and it's much appreciated by everybody.
Thank you. I'd also like to call up the representative of the firefighters, that's Deputy Chief Mario Ruda.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for the kind words. Thank you for the recognition. We don't train our people in the training academy to apprehend suspects, but we do take great care in hiring people that do the right thing, and these two showed tremendous amount of initiative and good judgment, and in this case, it worked out very well for the community. And it's very important because it's one of the communities I live in, so I'm very proud to have these two people there, and I know that any of the other 3,500 people in the fire department would do the same thing, so I'm very proud of these two, though. Thank you for the recognition.
Just in closing, I must say that the community in which this incident occurred is Mount Washington, and I need to say that these are the types of gestures that show that a neighborhood can heal. It's an area that has gone through much strife about different issues, but this shows us that when the community is willing to heal and willing to give up itself as a neighbor, that the healing process can take a much more quicker pace, and hopefully for the good of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. The chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco for his presentation.
from Venezuela to Los Angeles. This is a group that provides unique and innovative composers, and their compositions are recognized throughout the world. The group is composed of Jesús Cordero, Luis Suárez, José Guerra, and Eduardo Martinez. They are among the very few talented groups south of the border who research and interpret a musical repertoire representative of the folklore as diverse as Latin America itself. To date, the group has recorded 13 LPs and CDs. They are here in Los Angeles as part of an invitation from Dolores Mission Church in Ball Heights and the Los Angeles community, and many elected officials who assisted Dolores Mission's efforts. Los Guadawal will be performing today at 7:00 PM at the Grand Olympic Auditorium in downtown Los Angeles. The benefit proceeds will go to the victims of the earthquake in El Salvador. As you know, we have been very assistant in helping our brothers not only here in Los Angeles, but their families in El Salvador. The group is known for their song Casas de Cartón, Cardboard Houses, which depicts the misery of our brothers and sisters of Latin America as they are forced to live in substandard housing. I would like to thank Los Guadawal for sharing their music with us and for their cultural contribution to our city. I hope many of you can join us tonight, and please, let me give Guadawal a few moments to speak, and please give them your undivided attention.
En nombre del pueblo de Venezuela, en nombre de los concejales, y especialmente del concejal Nick Pacheco, de la iglesia Dolores Misión, que nos invita a un acto sencillo pero que nos da a nosotros una gran satisfacción como seres humanos. Nuestro motivo aquí en Los Ángeles es para realizar un concierto. Ese concierto va a recabar fondos de ayuda para 22 comunidades salvadoreñas que necesitan, pues, de la ayuda de todos los pueblos hermanos. Muchas gracias por esta gran oportunidad que nos brinda. Muchas gracias.
Okay, on behalf of the Grupo Guadawal, Eduardo, I and our group here would like to thank Nick Pacheco and his office, the city of Los Angeles, for accepting their invitation here to benefit El Salvador. And I'd like to also thank the office of Nick Pacheco. And we'd like to also thank Dolores Mission, and thank you very much.
Mr. President, colleagues, at this point, I will officially give the presentation first in Spanish, and then I will translate into English. De parte de la ciudad de Los Angeles, era mucho orgullo presentar este certificado de reconocimiento al grupo Los Guadawal, por todo que han hecho, no solamente en música, pero la contribución cultural a nuestra ciudad aquí en Los Angeles y también en todo el mundo de Latinoamérica. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles and my office, I want to present to you the certificate of recognition to Los Guadawal, not only for your contributions to our city, but for the contributions you have given to the world, the cultural contributions of representing the folklore and diversity of all of Latin America. Thank you. Gracias y bienvenidos a Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. The chair recognizes Mr. Rudi Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, for years, many of you have taken note of and paid your respect to what we now know as the Empowerment Congress of the Eighth District. Perhaps in the minds of many, the model of neighborhood councils in the city of Los Angeles, a premier model. I want to invite to the podium several members of the Empowerment Congress leadership, and if they would just come, you will know that item number 14 on the agenda deals with a project on which we've been working for several months, even beyond that, more like a year and a half, and it's entitled naming neighborhoods. This is an attempt to advance a perspective that causes the area known as South Los Angeles to rediscover, that is, to uncover many of its historic names and traditions. Toward that end, we've engaged in a rather extensive planning process, and item 14 today offers the recommendations for the designation of these various areas. Chesterfield Square, Hyde Park, Vermont Knoll, just a whole list of them that gives meaning, definition, and content to the term "community." And it gives a sense of history, a sense of place, as those who are here today are residents of those respective areas and have been for many, many years. Indeed, they are the stakeholders. And so, Mr. President, members of the council, a couple of them will want to speak to this item supportively for the benefit of our consideration when it is to be taken up. I would say they were here on this past Wednesday to be heard, were not afforded the opportunity in committee, and today, owing to our lack of a quorum, may not be able to formally speak, but because of your willingness, they are here to speak now.
For 10 years, the Empowerment Congress has been dealing with how to best identify ourselves, to our community and to our city at large. South Central LA has been the general appellation applied by the outside world and by ourselves, but it's the wrong name. It's wrong geographically, because South Central LA is the area around 41st and Dunbar. It's wrong because it disguises the proud heritage that that area has as a significant part of Black history in Los Angeles. And it's wrong because it pakers over the discreet, the different, the diverse communities that occupy the heart of Los Angeles, areas like Limerick Park, Village Green, Hyde Park, and many others. Now, over the last year, we've undertaken a campaign for naming our neighborhoods, and it has been an exciting and a heartwarming effort, because in doing so, we've uncovered parts of Los Angeles' history, we found hidden resources in the way of people who live in our communities, who know our communities' names and our communities' history, and has brought together residents united in the celebration of neighborhoods. We now wish to share our experience by having name signs posted in key locations in each of the communities of the Eighth District, so that visitors and residents alike will know where they are. We urge City Council to join us and to approve this motion recognizing the important place that communities have in our great city. We further recommend that our naming neighborhoods campaign be expanded to encompass the city as a whole, with the creation of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and the impending formation of neighborhood councils. This work can be an important component of helping neighborhoods coalesce and find their own unique identity. So, thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Elizabeth McClellan, and I came this morning because I have a real personal interest. I want you to think about it for a minute, and I'm going to ask the question, and you put a pin there. What's in a name? Well, I attribute my residency in South Central Los Angeles, as we are currently called, as that of riding on a train. And I note to you this morning, and you note also, that people who ride trains have no control over the train. They don't have any control over whether it stops or goes fast. They can't even blow the whistle. But when the train derails, all hell breaks out. All of a sudden, everybody on the train has some input. That's exactly how we feel living in a city where we are stigmatized, get all the negative news, and when you want to say something really bad, when the train derails, it's South Central Los Angeles. And all of a sudden, I don't even know what they're talking about on the news, but I have input all of a sudden. have input all of a sudden. Well, I'm here this morning to actually consider with us and help us to change that. And you can do so by considering our motion for this council to rename all of our neighborhoods in South Central. Give them some identity. Give us some self-respect. Give us an opportunity to identify ourselves, not have the news me to tell you who we are. From now on, if you come to my neighborhood, if you honor us this morning, we will be known as Green Meadows Villa. That's a pretty name. And I won't mind the news saying it happened in Green Meadows Villa, if it does happen there, but give me a chance to identify myself. Don't tell me who I am. I want to be proud of who I am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. They deserve a round of applause for their work and leadership. Additional persons with us, Mr. President, members of the council, in addition to Victor Namias, who you heard first from the West Area, Elizabeth McClellan from the Southeast Area, Evelyn Pramel, Willie Solomon, both from the Southeast Area as well, Rose Washington from the North, as well as Michael Turner from the North. These are Empowerment Congress leaders. Some have been with this experiment from the very beginning, in 1992. Some are recently elected, so this effort continues. We believe in naming our neighborhoods is a very interesting, worthwhile project. We have invited some of the city's best historians to meet with us, to talk about it, the city's planning department, as well as those at USC in urban planning have come to dean to give us perspective and attention. So this is a longstanding effort. We thank you for this opportunity to be heard and look forward to the favorable disposition of the item when it comes before the full body. Mr. President, members of the council, we thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Willie Thomas. Colleagues, as Mr. Willie Thomas referenced, we are short of a quorum at this point in Although we have just heard from Councilmember Garcetti, who says he is parking downstairs, he should have quorum momentarily.
All right, Mr. President. I was going to honor you by making a motion, but it is only preempted by that stellar announcement that you just made. But we can assure you, in less than 90 seconds, if there's a grand entrance, this Hon will offer a substitute motion for the one that I was about to make.
And while we're waiting, any other announcements or presentations this morning? Without that, then I appreciate your patience, and we'll await the arrival of Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Clerk, please call.
All rise for the honor of Eric Garcetti.
Congressman Glaner, Garcetti, and Hon hold. Ms. Cowsing, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Willie Thomas, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla, 10 members present and quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Let's, if I can ask everybody to please rise for our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Holden, would you do our honors today?
Mr. President, members, raise your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes. Mr. Holden moves. Mr. Reyes seconds. Commendatory resolutions for approval. Mr. Pacheco moves. Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, items numbers 1 through 8 are items for which public hearings have been held. A motion is required on both 4 and 5. 1 through 8 or before, as colleagues, public hearings have been held. Any specials? Items 1 through 8. Mr. Holden?
Do you need 10 votes to hear all those members present?
No. Public hearing has been held on both.
I'll be ineffective today.
No, they are. These are all eight vote items. However, items 4 and 5 do require motions since we have more than one committee report. Are there conflicting committee reports, Mr. Clerk?
Item number 4 is Arts, Health, Humanities, and Budget and Finance Committee reports. Both of them concur, so it would be a motion to adopt both on 4. On 5 is Arts, Health, Humanities, and Budget and Finance reports, and the recommendations differ. A motion is required to adopt one of the other reports.
Okay, let's call 5 special. Mr. Weiss moves both reports on item 4. So let's open the roll on items 1 through 8, with the exception of item 5. Mr. Willie Thomas?
Budget and Finance is 5. It can move forward without debate. I defer on that.
On item number 5? Let's hold that anyway. Items 1 through 8, with the exception of item 5. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items numbers 9 through 13 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Items 9 through 13 do not have requests from members of the public to speak on these items. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Any specials? Mr. President. Item number 10 called special by Mr. Holden.
I think 10 votes to hear it, so call the special.
Any other specials?
Mr. President, for Ms. Glaner's office on the reward motion on item 12, I would just like to delete the paragraph which talks about transferring the funds. It's not necessary this time until we know that the reward is being sought. This is just a standard reward motion, so it's just a technical correction.
Technical amendment to item number 12 without objection. Any other specials, 9 through 13? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on items 9, 11, 12 is amended, and 13. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Item number 14 on the continuation agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Public hearing has been held on item 14. Members wishing to call that special? Item 14. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Item 14 is approved. Send item 14 forthwith. Next item, please.
Item number 5 called special, and as much as two reports on one file, Arts, Health, Humanities, and Budget and Finance.
Mr. Willie Thomas? Mr. Willie Thomas? Mr. Willie Thomas? Item number 5 is before. Do you wish to clarify your intentions? We have two committee reports.
Right. And the second committee to hear it and refine it was Budget and Finance, and we should move that report and proceed accordingly.
Okay. Motion is to adopt the Budget and Finance report for item 5 and receive a file, the Arts, Health, Humanities report for item 5. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That item is approved.
Please.
Forthwith on item 5.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next item, please.
Item number 10 called special by Councilmember Holden.
Item number 10, Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, is any staff here to explain this, item 10, and why we have a compilation? All these reports are submitting that to the district attorney for the purpose of, I mean, the city attorney, for the purpose of city attorney submitting it to the court and saying this is our position. And maybe Ms. Kowski will introduce the motion. We want to comment on it because I think our concern is the following. As those reports came through, one at a time, we never had an opportunity as a council to review the compilation, what the total summation of those reports. And I think October 15th is the deadline, and of course, we should have an opportunity to review the data finalized that's going to be submitted to the court. And maybe Ms. Kowski will speak on that, but I'm, hold my time.
Oh, well, no, I'll speak later.
All right. And I would also say, Mr. President, members, that the report, those report includes the 312 program as well? Well, it should, because the court's going to have to deal with that eventually, because no matter what you submit to the court will perhaps be augmented, be changed by the program that we adopt, which will be 312. And therefore, you're going to have a shifting of personnel. You just asking for trouble from the court to submit this report as you are not finalizing it, and then you have to go back to the court, and you can't really implement it when you're doing an assessment of what your implementation plan really is, and it would have changed because of new information. As relates, not new information, but new plan as relates to workouts for police officers, you're going to find yourself in trouble with the court.
Mr. Holden, do you wish to address questions to staff, your staff here?
Well, whoever want to answer it.
Or Ms. Kowski?
Let me just try to answer that. Members of the council, this is the required report to the court under our consent decree. Mr. Holden is raising some valid issues about new ideas, new changes that we might make in the police department. Before they could be made, we've already heard from the independent monitor that we would have to address the issues as how that might affect compliance with the consent decree and the paragraphs. What this report is today is what we have done since the consent decree went into effect with the deadlines that were imposed by the various paragraphs regarding training, regarding supervision, regarding putting in place a whole array of issues, language availability, et cetera. If you look at the report, there's some hundred and seventy-five paragraphs that we are in compliance with and giving that report. The issues that you are raising would perhaps be best addressed when we do the next report, if there's to be any change in the police department and how it would affect things. But as of today, what we have done for the implementation, meeting our deadlines that were set first in July, then in October, for various things, thresholds that we had to meet, all of these have been reported on to the council through committee. They've had extensive lengthy hearings in committee, and then it's come to council, and some of the edits have been addressed specifically where the council, some council members have raised questions. But this one, this is just the summation of the report to date. Were there a problem or an issue that will arise in the future that will have to be addressed as we, in our next report back to judge?
Mr. President, members, I'm on time for questions. I think we should avoid confusing the court, and this is the question, quorum question, avoid confusing the court, once you submit one implementation plan, and the court should be informed that there may be some additional changes due to this new agreement that's going to develop. And if that's the case, the court should not be put in a position to be angered by subsequent information that we're going to submit to the court. Would you, Mr. President, true to president, would you respond to that?
Shirley, Fred Merton, City Attorney's Office, yes, Councilmember Holden, I think, I think the point made by Councilmember Ms. Kowski is correct in that what this is is a status report. It's nothing more than a reflection of what's been done to implement the decree provisions up to this point in time, up to this point in time. If there are going to be future developments of whatever kind, you mentioned the 312 plan or something else that comes along that affects the implementation of the decree, then in our subsequent reports, or even as we think it's required, we would want to bring that to the court's attention. That is how I think it ought to be done.
So, you don't think it's necessary then to inform the court, given the fact there's a lot of discussion in newspapers and the television regarding this new plan, that the new plan is likely to augment or change the implementation of the consent plan to meet the conditions of consent decree?
Well, to make that forecast firstly is an issue that would have to be talked about by our officials, but no, I don't think that that ought to be presented to the court at this point. I think because that hasn't happened yet. We're talking about, this is a recordation of what has happened to this point in time and nothing more than...
All right. All right, Mr. President, members of you. Fred, have you satisfied that the court will not be angered by what we're discussing? It's really well-honed, honest weight, and this consent, this 312 has got to be implemented, you know, full taste, I'm told, and then you're going to go back before you can implement the first plan, and then you say to the court, hey, by the way, isn't it flag? We got something else coming. Court's going to be angered by that, you know it. Court will be angered by that. But, you know, that's not the first time we stepped on the court's toes and they punished us for it.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Zine?
Yes, briefly, Mr. President, colleagues, whether it's a 312, or 410, or some other combination, police conduct has to be appropriate, and I don't think the hours of the officer's deployment really has any impact on the professionalism and their ability to deliver police service to the city. Additionally, use of force, there's appropriate guidelines for use of force, whether you're working a 312 or four, 10, or eight hours, there's appropriate balance and guidelines there. So I don't know where the connection is. If you're working 312, it doesn't mean you go out there and do unlawful, inappropriate activities in an unprofessional manner. So the hours, as Councilmember Holden brought up, have absolutely nothing to do with this. And if we work 24 hours a day, seven days a week with no break, what's the difference of delivering professional police service? So it doesn't mix. The teams too, and all those other factors that are in place, have absolutely nothing to do with the work hours. I don't know why the court would want to put one in with the other, because obviously there's no bearing. The other question I have is I see Congress and the folks in Washington, D.C., are doing a lot of things to give law enforcement better tools, better resources, more ability to do their job, and I don't know if that needs to be addressed as you proceed down the line locally to say, do we need to look at the changing environment since September 11th and maybe make some modifications to afford the LAPD to do the job they need to do? Are there any impediments in this that we're going against the grain in Washington, D.C., that they're permitting the federal authorities to do their job a little more professional and more appropriate and to counter the situation that we face within this country and the city? If you can comment on that, please.
Well, Shirley, Councilmember Zine, that's certainly a fair... Well, surely, Councilmember Zine, that's certainly a fair subject for discussion by this body and by other officials of the city, but it's certainly, it's not part of this report. It's a different subject, and that's a policy issue that would have to be developed, and we would have to see where that would take you in terms of if it had any bearing on this decree and what you might want to say to the judge. What was, excuse me?
Situation on the deployment, the hours?
No, that, that, I'm not in a position to say. I mean, you've made the assertion that the hours would have no bearing. If you change the work hours of police officers, it would have no bearing on the decree and its implementation. I'm not in a position to say that for me as a lawyer categorically. What I would say is this, if there were some change in the deployment program, and if it did have some potential bearing on the decree, that, we would address that. If that point were developed, then we would address it, and it may well find its way in those circumstances into the next report or maybe a supplemental report to the court.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, I was just thinking, a point of clarification actually. It seemed that Mr. Zine took the opportunity to assert that Mr. Holden's comments had no bearing on the subject matter or couldn't really sort that out. And then I thought I heard Mr. Merkin say to Mr. Zine that his comments were perhaps not as germane to the consent decree either, so I'm just waiting for the fourth speaker to stand and be told the same, and maybe that's me, so I'll sit down.
Ms. Kowski?
If I can clarify, Mr. Ridley Thomas, I think that the comments had no bearing on this report. The comments by both Mr. Zine and Mr. Holden are very relevant to future reports, given whatever changes may occur at all, given a change in deployment, given the change of September 11th. But all of that has happened post the dates that we're reporting on in this report. And I think that as Mr. Zine, well, as Mr. Holden had indicated, the issues already have been raised. We've had a letter from the independent monitor raising the issue of will any change in deployment schedule affect the city police department's ability to respond under the consent decree paragraphs? We, the council, have already asked our consultant to consider that. The consultant who is now working with the working group in the police department and this council is looking at all of those areas. Mr. Zine is absolutely right. If the, the performance, the requirement of the checks and balance on the performance of police officers, the conduct of police officers is part of the consent, is part of the consent decree, and that stays the same no matter what. All that we have to be aware of is that these other things that are out there, do they affect those things that we agreed to? And if they do, we look to see if we seek modification or need modification, or we say it's got to be accommodated in another manner. So those are legitimate issues, they're just not bearing on this report today, which is what we have done to date under the consent decree, in agreement, meeting our deadlines, and being able to report to the judge. Obviously, the next time this report comes forward, I think it'll be a much more heated discussion. But all of those issues are and will have bearing on where we go and what the department is able to do in terms of meeting those issues, not only dealing with the conduct of the police officers, but I think to some degree, almost more importantly, that ability relative to training, that ability relative to supervision, and that ability relative to risk management. Those are the issues that may or may not be affected by any number of things out there on the calendar today, but this one, we've met the goals, we've gotten things implemented that we said we would have implemented by a certain date, and so I move that we adopt this report so the city attorney can report to the judge on Monday.
Thank you, Ms. Kowski. Report is moved and before us. Mr. Zine for a second time?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Holden?
My question, Ms. Kowski, the letter that was written by the independent monitor, was that it all ever included in the report? Some form, in some form?
It's not recorded in this because it didn't apply to anything that we had already done. It will be.
Was it included in any report?
It will be in the new reports. It has been sent to the.
Ms. Kowski? The letter that was written by the independent monitor, was it ever at any time included in a report? I'd ask yes or no.
Yes.
It was? Now, my next question, will that report in which that letter was included be a part of this compilation?
It will be part of the next compilation.
The next, but not this one?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, fine. And so then therefore, the judge will not be informed as to what action, if any, that we're taking regarding the new work schedule, compressed work schedule. Let me just say, and I, that when this report is finalized by the city attorney, and then you're going to present it to the court, is that correct?
Correct.
Right, I think that each council member should have a copy of all those reports that go together and that's finalized. I like to have a copy of it at the time you're submitting it. Not that it has to come back here because I don't think there's any interest in that. There is before it goes to court? That was your motion? No, 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 no. The one that you're going to present by October 15th, that's the one. I like to see a final copy of it. Respectfully, therefore, request that I get a final copy of it. Thank you, Mr. Merkin.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Report is before us. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Chair recommends to Mr. Garcia.
I'd like to move to reconsider 9C for a technical amendment.
Request to reconsider item number 9C. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten aye.
Item 9C is now reconsidered and before us. Mr. Garcia?
Just like to submit the substitute motion, 9C, for your consideration.
I see that's being circulated as we speak. Members with questions or a comment on item 9C in the substitute motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll and substitute. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten aye.
Substitute 9C is adopted. Next item, please.
Now it's time for public comment on non-adjunct items.
It's a public comment period, an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on matters within our jurisdiction that's not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls for Mr. Tuck Hayes to be followed by Victor Namias. Mr. Hayes? Mr. Namias? Ms. Elizabeth McCleod? Also not here, I believe, two of them might have spoken earlier. Then seeing no further requests, the public comment period for this meeting is closed. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Motion for posting a referral.
Will be posted.
Councilmembers' request for excuse from council. Councilmember Reyes' request to be excused on October 24th for city business, a motion is required.
Mr. Ridley Thomas moves. Mr. Reyes is excused. The justice clear. Ms. Kowski, did you wish to be addressed? Adjourning motions? Any adjourning motions? If not, I do have to. Colleagues, I'd like to join me in adjourning. I believe Mr. Pacheco may wish to be a second on this in memory of Mr. Enrique Garcia, born February 29th, 1950, in a small town in Yucatan, but raised a family in the Boyle Heights area of our city. Went from various physical labor jobs on to become a teacher's assistant in LAUSD and his father to Enrique Garcia, a friend and employee of a senior member, Tom Calderon. Colleagues also wish for you to join me in adjourning in memory of Dr. Peter Rosenthal, an outstanding leader in the environmental policy and Everglades restoration, who died at home just last Sunday. Most of us will know him as the father of Bill Rosenthal. He was 57. He'd been battling, excuse me, brother, he had been battling cancer for the past year. In the last decade, Dr. Rosenthal has been leading environmental advisor to the Florida sugar industry and its Everglades restoration efforts, and was instrumental in involving the landmark 1994 Everglades Forever Act and securing the sugar industry's commitment to Everglades restoration. His folksy style, lively wit, and knowledge of the southern Florida ecosystem, and the respect and affection of business, environmental, and political leaders, something not easily accomplished. We'll do all members on that. And third request, colleagues, that we adjourn in memory of Tilly Zucker, who passed away after celebrating her 86th birthday this last October 9th. She's preceded in death her husband, Leonard Zucker. She's been a resident of the San Fernando Valley for more than 58 years and was a director of operations for Eli's Best for over 16 years, and most recently a resident of the 7th Council District. I'd like to adjourn in her memory as well. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.